Well, sir.
You noticed I was the last one in. You noticed that I was the last one in. You worry about me being on time.
Beth.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Very good. Good evening, everybody. I opened the Board of Supervisors for this November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five joint public hearing regarding the Envision twenty forty five comprehensive plan. Let me introduce our board members. On my far left is Mr. Walter Michael, representing the Blue Ridge District. Mr. Brandon Nicely, representing the Fincastle District. And on my right is Dr. Max Scott Horn, representing the Valley District. We have Mr. Steve Clinton online, representing the Amsterdam District. We approved earlier in the day his virtual participation. Mr. Clinton, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am, I hear you.
Fantastic, technology works. And I'm Amy White, and I represent the Buchanan District. We're going to view and discuss the comprehensive plan presentation. This is a public hearing and public comments will be taken. Please remember to sign a speaker form if you would like to comment. Do you have some? Okay, great. So you can drop those off with Ms. Parker if you would like to do that.
Good evening. I reconvene the November tenth, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission today, November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five, for this joint public hearing regarding the Envision twenty forty five comprehensive plan. Thank you all for attending this joint public hearing. Please make sure all cell phones, communication devices, et cetera, are on silent mode. The agenda is posted on the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors website if you would like to follow along. Before we begin, I'll introduce our members and explain our procedures. On my far left is Mr. Tim Lucas, representing the Valley District. Mr. Steve Kidd, representing the Buchanan District. On my right, Mr. Sam Foster, represents the Blue Ridge District. And Mr. Tim Snyder, representing the Amsterdam District, is on my far right. I'm Elizabeth Lefell, representing the Fincastle District. The Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors will view and discuss the comprehensive plan presentation. This is a public hearing and public comments will be taken. Please remember to sign a speaker form if you would like to comment. Mr. McCoy and Mr. Lindsay will facilitate the presentation and discussion.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I wanted just a quick note of clarity. We do have two other public hearing items that are relatively quick. I'm not sure if on the agenda they were scheduled before the comprehensive plan, but those are relatively quick items, and you may want to consider those first prior to the comprehensive plan public hearing.
Dr. Lefell, would that be all right?
That's fine.
If we consider those two so that we can move that business along and then spend the rest of the evening on the comp plan?
Yes.
Okay. Well, great suggestion, Mr. McCoy. Thank you. Let's have the public hearing first for the Fincastle District. This is Agenda Item on the Board of Supervisors, twenty two A. Wesley Hodges requesting a change of conditions to remove the word temporary on an SEP. If you could present that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight before you is a fairly straightforward request from Mr. Hodges. You may recall this item that came forward earlier this year where he was granted a temporary special exception permit for a campground. Mr. Hodges has requested that that word temporary be stricken from the conditions. That way he can continue operating the campground long term. He's had some great success filling the four camp tents there. It's just simply requesting that we strike that temporary word from the conditions. That way he can operate the campground on a permanent basis. He said there has been some issues in financing and getting the building constructed. He's been approved for bed and breakfast special exception permit as well. So this would be supplementary to his fly fishing business that he operates. Folks, stay there. And he takes them out into the country and does some fly fishing and hunting and all sorts of good stuff. So I won't get too far into the details. You may remember the property at discussion here, just off Bridge Street. That is an aerial of the property as well. And as a reminder, the suggested conditions, we are keeping all the conditions that are there right now. The only condition that is suggested being stricken from is just the temporary provision. It had been written to have it be temporary up until either the construction of the bed and breakfast or until October thirty first, two thousand twenty five, whichever came first. We've heard no complaints about Mr. Hodges' function there, no noise complaints, anything like that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. The Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously, and I believe Mr. Hodges is here as well in case you have any questions for him.
Any questions?
No.
Mr. McCoy, no questions? Any questions for Mr. Hodges? Thank you for being here tonight. Hearing no questions, is there a motion to approve? Oh, sorry.
Public hearing.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing on this Agenda Item. Twenty two A. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? I will close the public hearing.
And Madam Chair, if there's no other discussion, request that change the conditions, remove the word temporary. Maintaining the suggested conditions present.
We have a motion and a second to simply remove the word temporary. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Any abstentions? That passes. Thank you. Thank you. And now we will move on to Agenda Item twenty two B from the Amsterdam District. Requesting an SEP from Bodatack County for a lighted park.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you, it's a request for a lighted park in accordance with our special exception permit processes with section twenty five dash five oh four lighting standards and the waivers and modifications. So Bodatack County requires a special exception permit for any park that has lights on it. Additionally, we are requesting a waiver for the maximum of height there to go up to seventy feet for those lights in the park itself. So this is located not too far away from us here as we are here today at Greenfield Park. The aerial images are there for you to see if you're not familiar with it. Some of the suggested conditions is that the proposed field lighting shall not exceed seventy feet in height, but development shall be conducted in substantial performance to the submitted concept plan entitled Musco Lighting Plan submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office on September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. And that field lighting shall automatically turn off no later than ten P M. on any day, except for events specifically approved by Bodatack County Parks and Rec. It's my understanding is those lights are also remotely controlled by an application on a phone. So if there are ever concerns that those lights were on past the time they should be, Parks and Rec staff can just simply press a button and turn those lights off. Requested action for you this evening is to approve or deny the special exception permit. Our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Morales, is here if you have any questions about some of the technical details. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer some questions as well.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Morales, would you like to compliment this? Request?
Thank you. So I had spoken to some people at two o'clock. I had heard that there was a citizen who brought up a comment about another field that had a wind turbine on top of it. I had called around and asked around since then to try and figure out a little bit more information about it. Essentially, it was an experiment that was done in two thousand eleven with the concept being that the Roanoke Valley may produce enough wind to provide electricity that could then be stored and used throughout that field. From our understanding and talking to Musco, the lighting company, who it's their product with a kind of engineered additional component on top of it. The architect who designed it is retired from then since then. And basically, they never replicated it because it never met like the net energy needs that it needed to do. It required a larger pole and became a lot more expensive to be able to do it. And a lot of it was part of a renewable energy kind of lead certification that the school was going for at the time. So just to address that, it's something that I looked into. It's something that does not seem to make feasible sense, but it is something that we could, you know, continue to explore if that is so desired.
I think it's William Fleming.
How was that?
High school, William Fleming.
Yeah, William Fleming. Yes, yes. Yeah, it was done in two thousand eleven there. Okay. And then permission to approach to give you guys a little bit more information as well.
Of course.
So what I just handed you all, and I can kind of pass this around so that people can see it as well, is the evolution of Musco lighting over the years. So the vendor that we would like to go with is kind of known as the top dog when it comes to sports field lighting. As you can see, nineteen seventy seven compared to today, looking at it head on, the way that the light is positioned is that people won't be able to kind of see that big glare that you might see at other fields. So that's why we kind of chose them comparison to other people. It's one of those things that it's a solution that neighbors will love, and that's kind of the why we decided to go with them. A little bit more about the light controls, too. So as far as, you know, light usage for people, somebody would rent the facility or there'd be a plan program there. We can set multiple timers to decide that the lights turn on at a certain time, turn off at another time. There's also different light functions of bright, more dim, a little bit more dim, too. So we have a lot of control. One of the great things about this company as well is they have a twenty five year maintenance free warranty. They have remote employees who are constantly monitoring them. If there's a light bulb out, they know before we do, and they actually send a subcontractor to come and fix that for us for twenty five years. So the investment, you know, pays off over time. One other thing that was brought up at the commission meeting was the height. So some of the poles, four of the poles should be sixty feet tall, two of the poles seventy feet tall, just the way that the fields are kind of outlined. That's what their engineer decided makes the most sense for it. To put it in perspective, the lights at the sports complex right next door are also seventy feet tall. We verified that with Musco just to make sure. So because that's up on a hill as well, these would be a little bit lower. And the photometric plans kind of show that it stays on our property and does not spill over to any other adjacent properties, which is also why we decided that Musco would be the best choice for us. Happy to share more information if y'all have any additional questions, but just thought those were pertinent information, details that you might want to know.
Do you know what the expected maintenance cost is? Like how often and how expensive?
Yeah, so over twenty five years, zero. So that's kind of the benefit of going with this company and going directly through them. They have a subcontractor who does the work, but once again, they monitor it and they, if there's a light bulb that goes out, if there's an issue with the pole, this pamphlet also kind of shows that, you know, it assures results from day one, year one, and twenty five years later. To put it in perspective, Musco is also who lit the sports complex, you know, back when that was built. And we still have another six years that we've had, we haven't had to pay any maintenance fees for any of those. Now, there's operating costs, obviously, but there is no maintenance fees associated with them.
Any other questions for Mr. Morales or for Mr. McCoy?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions.
All right, Steve, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Traditionally and historically, we've had problems with athletic field lights being turned off in a timely manner after events. I hear what you're saying, but I'd just like to hear it again. The assurances that we'll have better control over that. Did I understand that the vendor themselves will come out to extinguish the lights if need be?
Really bad feedback.
Say again?
Let's try again, Steve. Can you continue with your question?
Yeah, just looking for assurance that we are in fact going to have backup from the vendor for extinguishing the lights after an event is over. We've had problems with that in the rather distant past, but nonetheless, I'm concerned about that, just like some assurance that we're, that we do have control over at this time. Hello?
Okay, Steve. Try to, try to continue with your question.
Did you hear anything?
Yes.
Yes.
I think, how are we going to ensure they're cut off in a timely manner?
Yeah, through, through, through the vendor. I want to make sure I understood what Mr. Morales said, which was, I think, that as part of the package, the vendor will provide backup for extinguishing the lights.
Yep, so I'm happy to answer that. So also in this pamphlet, it kind of explains it a little bit further. They provide twenty four seven kind of access monitoring of our systems when it comes to, they call it their control link central, to be able to turn lights on and off remotely. Here, they had said they have done it for seven point six million events. They've conducted routine inspections and maintenance over eleven thousand fields, helped answer two hundred ninety seven thousand calls, nine hundred eighty one thousand app sessions, one point three million website logins, and so forth. So a part of it is that they have the schedule as well as we have the schedule, so they're monitoring it as well. When it comes to the other field lighting in Bodatack County, pretty much all the rest of them are operated via a light switch that if somebody wanted to use the lights, they flip the light on. And then they're on a timer, so at ten o'clock, they're supposed to turn off, but they physically have to turn off the switch in order to turn on and on the lights. These lights don't have that. It's all kind of managed through this remote thing that's being monitored by them twenty four seven as well as us. So they have support that we can call, that people can call, as well as, you know, us doing it as well, making sure that the events are running smoothly the best that we can. So they have provided assurances, and once again, they provide at least for twenty five years, all labor and parts and warranty. And then I believe for the life of the product, they also kind of help with the monitoring as well.
So that's for, that's for their new product. You said that our existing athletic fields have their product as well. It's the same company?
It's the same company, but over time, they've kind of improved their processes and have changed their equipment. So a lot of the other lights that we have across Bodatack County aren't fixed with these remote controls. They can be upgraded for a large dollar amount. We kind of have those numbers. So a few other lights, other fields can be upgraded to have the same technology as, as this one does.
Okay, good answer. Thank you.
Steve, I just sent you the pamphlet there if you got that on your phone.
Check your phone, Steve.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
Wonderful. Other questions? Steve, do you have other questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who would like to comment. We also have, I know, a couple of comments that came in that you have in front of you written. Is anyone here that would like to speak tonight regarding this? Sure, come on.
Those comments may be the ones, like the ones, the written comments.
If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. Come on down here and say your name and where you live. We'll make it all official.
Okay, I'm Channing Preston. I live at one two zero Smithfield Way, which is the adjoining closest home to this property. I just didn't want to waste your time because hopefully those public comments are the ones that we sent in or include them. I know that, did you send one in, too? At least my mother and my wife and I sent in public comments possibly stop as well. So if those aren't part of that already, then I'll reiterate them, but some of our concerns are around the actual targeted lighting levels themselves. So thirty to forty five plus foot candles is more like what's in an office setting, like in this room right now. And what I've found is that recreational fields, which is what this is, tend to have a target of twenty foot candles and don't require sixty and seventy foot poles to achieve that. So we're just kind of wondering if, if the goal here is for a collegiate level field, that's what this lighting plan is. And it was our understanding that this is a rec and training field, which doesn't require that level of lighting. So both for cost reasons and also to just keep the height of the poles down. There's currently a tree line that's about fifty feet above the fields, and I would just love to see a plan that targeted twenty foot candles and fifty foot poles to both save money and also just reduce the, the lighting. We'd also like to see, you know, make sure that it's in writing, and it probably is, just that the timing, you know, them going off by ten o'clock. I noticed that there's an exemption for special events. I don't know how often those would be, but I just want to make sure that those, that's all in the proposal. Like here's what it's for, and it's not for security lighting. And then I guess the bonus points would be if we could talk about getting this trashed line of Bradford pears replaced with some real trees, like we could kill two birds with one stone here. But maybe you'll have that in writing there. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Then I will close the public hearing, and I would ask Mr. Morales if you would come up and maybe address, and I think there's other comments that we received written as well, that address, what's the goal here? Is it, are we over lighting for what we need? Do we work with less? I think that's the gist of the questions that we received.
Sure. Yeah, so when speaking to Musco, they kind of had recommended two different kind of average light levels. Thirty foot candles is the average that they recommend, which is the plan that you see in front of you. And then fifty foot candles is kind of the collegiate level, other kind of situation that they have. So talking to the engineer, the way that the field is laid out, if you look at a map, the two fields are side by side. So these six poles surround both of these fields, whereas in some cases, like imagine a football stadium, there is only one field that requires lights to be around them. So in order to get that kind of thirty foot average kind of spread around the entire field, that's why they have those two seventy foot poles and then those four sixty foot poles around it. Originally, we were asking for sixty foot poles, and we were kind of seeing what the lowest was, and the engineer said that that was what, you know, that it would be. And so that's kind of the main, I think, answer to that question. I'm happy to go further if it feels needed to go further.
Okay.
Yeah, and to speak a little bit, as I talked in the meeting as well. So one of the benefits of utilizing Musco lighting is their ability to control light and keep it on the field. So if you look at the photometric plans and you see that kind of first tree line, that the foot candles drop significantly from twenty four average to six average to one average to zero average, you know, within a few feet. Keeping it all within, you know, the property lines of the rec park and not spilling over even the slightest to the others are the guarantees that the manufacturer is providing us at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll, I'll just back up the comment about the Bradford pears. We, I'd certainly be in favor of including something in, it'd be next year's budget, but they, they need replacement. They're pretty sad. So just as a commentary outside of the lighting, the landscape there and the Bradford pears, we could, we can approve upon that. So I think that's worthwhile looking into.
Fantastic. Did you get that?
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, you provide the funding. I'm happy to do any project you'd like me to do. Yeah, and that is, you know, in comparison to the lights, is a relatively small project, and we're happy to comment.
Awesome. Further discussion? Do I have a motion to take action on this item?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any other discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Any abstentions? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will get to the star of the show, the comprehensive plan. Oh, my, rearranging the furniture. Okay.
One moment here. I'm going to minimize that when I'm recording it. Whatever you need. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everybody can see me, everybody can hear me. All right. Good evening, Madam Chairs, members of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Tonight, you have the opportunity to take public comment on Envision Bodatac twenty forty five, the draft version of the comprehensive plan that we've been working on for quite some time. As you know, we have been working on this in-house for many years, utilizing plans and studies, data, public feedback, and county expertise to develop what you see before you today. So to get this started, I wanted to start a little high level and discuss the reason why we plan. There are four reasons here in this slide, but many more exist. Broadly speaking, we plan to guide growth with intention rather than react to the growth presented before us. We plan to protect what makes Bodatac special, its landscapes, communities, and character. We plan to coordinate land use, transportation, and infrastructure in a way that strengthens safety and quality of life. And last but not least, especially as far as Mr. Lockaby is concerned, we plan to meet Virginia State Code requirements, especially section fifteen point two dash twenty two, twenty three, which says that we have to have a comprehensive plan. So high minded ideals, but it always is nice when we're also required to do so by state code. All right, the planning process has been long for sure, and rightfully so. Plans should be deliberate and in-depth, and doing it in-house has allowed us to connect directly with the community and provide real shared expertise, rather than relying on a consultant who may be from Charlotte or New York or Northern Virginia, Atlanta, any of those big places. This process started way back in two thousand seventeen with a gateway crossing area plan being adopted and the adoption of the updated transportation chapter and Parks and Recreation chapter. As you'll see, in the interim, in two thousand eighteen to nineteen, a community survey was conducted and community feedback sessions were held. With a brief pause in two thousand twenty, when I came aboard in twenty one, we kicked the process back up again with some online map based surveys in two thousand twenty two, in which we garnered nearly sixteen hundred responses with those rounds of feedback. Then over the past few years, through more public engagement, we've added nearly four hundred more responses with a total of near to or exceeding two thousand total pieces of individual feedback in this process. I'll touch some more on the recent feedback here in just a few slides. So what exactly is in the plan? So first off, the plan starts and ends with community input. This is the community's plan. It's not the John McCoy Planning Supervisor Plan. It's not the Planning Commission's plan. It is the community's plan. Their feedback is the start and the end of the plan itself. That's central. It's integral to its development. There are plenty of data points in the plan from soil points, soil types, to demographic statistics, to bridge of land in the county by zoning type. Envision Bodatac twenty four, or twenty forty five utilizes and references other plans and studies as well, such as transportation plans, housing plans, plans developed by the county and the Regional Commission as well. The meat of the plan exists in the planning elements you see before you. Those include Those include arts, culture, and history, natural environment, local economy, housing, land use, mobility, and community services and facilities. Digging even further, some of the important features of the plan include the future land use map, which reduces areas identified for medium-density housing considerably from the two thousand and ten plan. It also returns some low-density housing areas to agricultural designation based off conversations we heard from the community during our feedback sessions, as well as conversations we had during work sessions with the Planning Commission. Furthermore, it focuses development into areas that have existing suitable infrastructure. The plan also includes objectives and strategies to preserve ag property and open natural areas as well as strengthening protection of existing assets. It identifies problem road intersections and segments and includes measures to improve those locations. It also discusses a balanced approach to housing development, highlighting workforce housing needs and preserving existing character of our community. So I'd like to go over some, take some time to go over summation of the feedback we heard from the community in October. This is going to sound pretty familiar to the Planning Commission as they heard that earlier this month. I'm going to stick high level, happy to get more into the weeds if you'd like. I kept those slides in this presentation just in case you wanted to go over some more detail. So we held three community feedback sessions, one here at Greenfield, one at James River High School, and one at Colonial Elementary. In total, we had ninety-one attendees who left three hundred eighty-seven comments on the boards that we presented to them. We also held an online survey asking people to rate the objectives and strategies of the plan. That was opened from October first to the thirty-first, and we received two hundred and ninety-one individual responses. See if this will advance. Was advancing. There we go. I included some pictures from the community feedback sessions. I really enjoyed that. From what I could tell, the people that attended it really enjoyed it as well. I included pictures from two boards that we received. That was the housing board. I think the one on the bottom left might be the local economy board. We just asked folks to write their thoughts on sticky notes and include those in there. That is included in the plan. It should be in your packet as well. We took time to hand-type every single note that we had received. I think there was maybe two notes that we couldn't interpret, just handwriting was tough sometimes. But everybody that we received, we faithfully included and typed up, and it's in your packet as well. So this slide goes over the overall tone that we heard from the community feedback sessions. So some of the tone that we heard was a shared pride in Bonita's rural identity with a desire for more deliberate and balanced growth and a need for a more thoughtful, transparent, and locally grounded approach to growth and planning. Some of the key themes that we heard across those three sessions was preserving what makes Bonita top, Bonita top. The community deeply values rural landscapes, agricultural land, scenic views, and natural beauty, and wants future growth to protect those qualities. We heard that planning for balanced intentional growth is important. Attendees supported development that is well-coordinated, thoughtfully located, and aligned with the county's long-term vision. We also heard investing in strong infrastructure and services. Attendees see opportunities to ensure roads, schools, utilities, and public safety services keep pace with community needs. We also heard a lot of celebrating the heritage and natural assets that we have in the county. Bonita's history, culture, and outdoor recreation resources are a great deal of a source of pride that should be fully promoted and connected throughout the community. And then supporting a community, there's broad enthusiasm for locally grounded businesses, agricultural, clean industry, and recreation-based enterprises that enhance quality of life. Next few slides go into the specific feedback we heard at each location. Since we've kind of gone over that already, I won't get dive into those details, but I can always go back and talk more about it if you'd like. As I mentioned, we also had an online survey that was opened from October first to the thirty-first, which received two hundred and ninety-one individual responses. Overall, those polled reported general agreements with the strategies proposed to meet the goals outlined in the plan itself. So average ratings, it was a score of one to five, with one being they absolutely hated it, five, they absolutely loved it. Anything scoring a three or higher was general agreement with the objectives and strategies. And as you see here, all of the objectives and strategies for each planning element either scored right above three or got as high as four point one-six in the natural environment chapter. And again, these, this is feedback that was received and is pertinent to each individual element. Happy to discuss that if you'd like. But otherwise, I wanted to highlight the fact that we heard from the community and we also made changes based off what we heard from the community. We did not take comments and throw them in the trash. We did not take comments and ignore them. We took comments, worked with the Planning Commission, and made some changes to the plan based off those comments. So some of those that we included from just this month was a reduction in low-density housing area from Gravel Hill Road to Shavers Farm and Trinity Road. So what I mean by that is we had low-density residential that's identified in yellow that extended up to Gravel Hill Road. Some folks in the community wanted to see the northern terminus of that brought down to Shavers Farm and Trinity Road. So we went ahead and did that. The Planning Commission recommended that as well. We modified a portion of land on US Route eleven near the Roanoke County line from commercial to industrial flex to allow some opportunities for better development of that parcel there, also recommended by the Planning Commission. We removed one strategy, pursue certified local government status through the National Park Service from Chapter Three Arts, Culture, and History. That was one that a lot of folks in the community didn't understand what, what it meant. We also weren't entirely sure if that was a program that would continue at the federal level for years to come. So rather than be tied to that, we wanted to go ahead and take that out. We also added a section to Chapter Four Natural Environment in the Planning Context section focused entirely on groundwater protection. That was something that we heard a lot from the community, the importance of protecting our groundwater resources. And so to beef up that language, make sure that it's acknowledged in the plan, it's something that's important to the community, we added the language here on the screen too. We added another section to Chapter Four, a natural environment and our partners and programs section. Identifying the Roanoke City and Allegheny Health Districts as an important partner. I'm imperfect and I'll acknowledge that we did not include that in the plan. Somebody asked why we didn't, and it was a fantastic idea to include it, and so we did. And the Planning Commission recommended that as well. Added items to Chapter Seven Land Use in the Needs Assessment Section. So each chapter has a needs assessment section that kind of summarizes the chapter itself. We included two bullet point items in there, working to encourage well-coordinated development that complements and strengthens existing infrastructure systems and strategically guide high-intensity developments such as data centers to ensure infrastructure readiness and maximize local benefits. And last but not least, we added some items. Chapter Eight Mobility is required by VDOT. This wasn't necessarily something that anybody asked for. It's a statutory requirement that VDOT makes us have in the plan. They reviewed this chapter, provided comments that we had missed two items, so we went ahead and put those in there. They've not finalized that review. I was told they would have comments back very soon, probably after Thanksgiving. It's pretty straightforward what we missed and we included in there, so I imagine that they'll say that we did respond for that. So I believe tonight you have the opportunity to take comments on the plan and have the opportunity to consider adoption of the plan if you so choose. I'm happy to take any questions you may have and I highly appreciate your time, not only this evening, but throughout the planning process, and it has been long and arduous. So I definitely appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I think to say thank you for working so hard on this is the understatement of the day. It is really hard to articulate and even imagine. Think if you had to put this together from scratch, where would we even start? And the work that's gone into this, the time that you and your, your team, Nicole, has put into this. I just think that is outstanding and I really appreciate the work y'all have done. I know it's been in hand-in-hand with the Planning Commission, so thanks to all of you all. The fact that we have something that is in this, in this form right now is, is just a testament to your work, your knowledge, and acknowledging it is really not enough, but thank you.
Thank you.
So I think it is time to open our public hearings. I am going to open the public hearing for the Board of Supervisors. Do we have anyone who would like to speak?
Libby Schiffer. You can either choose that microphone or come down here, whichever you like.
Let's be right here. There's a whole lot. Maybe come down here if you don't mind.
Good evening. There are many things I could discuss regarding Envision twenty forty-five, but my time being limited, I will not be able to address them all. This plan offers government involvement in numerous aspects of life. Housing, transportation, recreation, the arts, the food we eat. This plan will take away the character of Bonita and remove from it many of the desirable aspects of living here. The plan states that many citizens of Bonita travel to Roanoke City or Roanoke County for work, but yet they choose to live further away in Bonita. That should tell us something. They could live close to where they work, but they would rather commute farther and live in a quieter, lower-tax, lower-crime area. If people want urbanization, the arts, public transportation, high-density housing, they have all that in Roanoke City just a few minutes away. It appears urbanization is a goal of Envision twenty forty-five. This is not the character of Bonita County, and by the information given in Envision twenty forty-five, that citizenry prefers single-family homes. Why push something else on them? If housing affordability is truly a concern, the board can look at lowering property taxes as this contributes a real burden to the monthly payment for a mortgage instead, excuse me, for a monthly payment for a mortgage. Instead, the board has in the past few years voted twice to raise the property tax. What is affordable housing? It is not always townhouses and apartments. Single-family homes can actually cost less per month than these types of housing. Regarding one-unit housing, the plan states, quote, "While this housing is predominant and seemingly the preference in the county, a lack of variety in housing type can limit the type of person who lives in Bonita." The premise seems incorrect. Why can certain types of people only have certain types of housing? It is interesting, the plan also states, "Encourage local schools to incorporate urban planning, land use topics into their curriculum." Is urban planning really the priority for education in our schools? This would seem to be a way to win over the next generation to the Planning Commission's way of thinking. The plan also states that residents may live too far away from healthy food options. Define too far. Are people not able to access food? Are we living such a charmed life that driving several miles to a Kroger, a Foodland, a Walmart is too much? The, the term food desert is also referenced. Please understand the definition of this. It does not mean that the individual does not have ready access to food. From the USDA, in addition to income levels of the area, a food desert is an area in which, quote, "At least five hundred persons and/or at least thirty-three percent of the population lives more than one mile from a supermarket or large grocery store." This'll take fifteen seconds. Is that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was three minutes. More than one mile, this is too much of a burden to obtain food. Lastly, the new vision statement given at the beginning of the Envision twenty forty-five document is different from one given in twenty-ten, most notably that it no longer mentions safety and the value and cost of government services. I would urge the board to not adopt Envision twenty forty-five. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Are there anyone else who wants to speak? There's no other public comments?
And I'm going to close the public hearing for the Board of Supervisors?
I close the public hearing for the Planning Commission. Is there a motion for the Planning Commission to take action on the comprehensive plan?
Madam Chairman, before we make a motion, I have a few questions that I would like to pose for discussion amongst the Planning Commission and propose them so that the board members can hear these as well. Some of these comments that I'm about to share and or questions I'm about to pose came to me from both members of the Amsterdam District and outside of the Amsterdam District, and some of them, quite frankly, surfaced for me today. Bonita County is getting ready to commit or has now committed via today's board meeting to commit resources to the Rebecca Furnace. And in light of that, I'd like to ask Mr. McCoy and or members of our commission, do we have language in our comprehensive plan that supports that? Because I think it's a great idea and I want to make sure that we do, in fact, support that. And if the comprehensive plan needs to address it, I'd like to make sure that we have a comment in there. Now is or would be the last time for me to make that comment potentially.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Snyder. Without, so I wasn't at the board meeting today. I was back in the office putting a presentation together on something. I don't know all the details to the Rebecca Furnace conversation. I do, after our conversation just a little bit ago, I do feel confident the plan mentions many times throughout the natural environment chapter, throughout the local economy chapter, and through the arts, culture, and history chapter about the importance of identifying, elevating, and promoting our historic assets, both for tourism and enjoyment of the localities in the community that lives here. While those are not specifically identified in the plan, I do feel that what's written in the plan will likely set us up to make mo, make moves and, and implement funding or however we need to do to make that process work for the furnaces to be included in a furnace trailer or however else it needs to be done.
Any further comments on, on that particular question or comment? Can I follow that? I'm sorry.
I don't think it's specifically listed, but I, I do agree with Mr. McCoy that we have set it up that those types of things would be encouraged.
And, and I don't argue that either. I just want to make sure that, that these comments and concerns are addressed this evening. And so a few more line items, if I may, Mr. McCoy. We've now committed to History Museum, Welcome Center of sorts. That is now something that, that citizens are going to look forward to. Again, I'll kind of frame the question in the same manner. Does our comprehensive plan address that? Is there anything in particular that our comprehensive plan needs to include language-wise to support that endeavor?
So a couple of things there, same kind of conversation, arts, culture, history, local economy. These chapters do identify the importance of highlighting and elevating the history that we have in the community. I know the physical location, I believe, is supposed to intended to be here in Greenfield. However, at the time of the writing of the plan, we were entirely sure of the location. I think some details are likely to still be worked out in the process of constructing that facility. If it's publicly owned, we'll want to identify that in the plan as well. If it's not, if there's some public-private partnership, I'd have to lean on our county attorney to determine whether it needs to be specifically outlined in the plan itself as far as the location is concerned.
Again, thank you. Two more. I know that we are involved with Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, and I know that we utilize their strengths. However, we've also seen feedback where citizens are looking for a county-oriented employee or a county-themed representative of tourism and, and small business, things of that nature. Do we feel as though our comprehensive plan addresses that concern that has been raised by, by folks from our community?
Certainly. Comprehensive plan mentions Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is a valued partner in promoting the county and its assets in the Blue Ridge region, of course. Any decision based off personnel would have to be a decision, I believe, made with the county administration and the board as well. I think the plan is generalized enough to say that if that's the direction we want to go in, then we can certainly do so. Again, it is a high policy-guiding document, so if there is something that the board would want to see with a specific position related to that, I believe the comprehensive plan could back them for that.
Excellent. Thank you. Last one. A resident of Amsterdam with strong convictions has approached me on multiple occasions. We understand that Tinker Creek assists Carvin's Cove. We understand that it also is its own watershed for residents in Bonita County directly. I think we can understand that it bears a significant piece of our future. And that watershed should in some form or fashion be represented on our future land use map and or have consideration taken in terms of its well-being and the caretaking of that watershed moving forward. taken in terms of its well-being and the caretaking of that watershed moving forward. And I want to make sure that I ask this question again before it goes to the full board for approval. Where do you feel as though we stand with regards to that watershed? And what steps are we taking to ensure its safety, quality, et cetera, moving forward?
It's a fantastic question. Tinker Creek, as well as the rest of the waterways in the county, came out a lot during the community feedback sessions. People identified those as important to the character of the county, important for their quality of life and important as an asset to protect. The comprehensive plan, though a map does not identify those areas as, you know, dedicated important things to preserve, we have existing regulations through the state that requires us to identify and protect those waterways through development. We also have plenty of language in the plan that will allow us to take a look at our current local ordinances and regulations and determine if we need to take an extra step to protect those. I don't think that the plan itself is one that is intended to be specific enough to say what protections are necessary to protect those waterways, but it does set us, set us up well to take a look at our zoning ordinance regulations, subdivision ordinance regulations and other regulations we have in the county to determine what the best fit would be for those locations.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I appreciate the extra attention to those questions tonight. I wanted to make sure that our planning commission, my peers here, had that opportunity to think that through and I wanted to make sure that that information was available to board members as they consider this, this evening. Thank you. You've, you've answered my questions at this time and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, that being the case, I make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan as drafted at this time.
My motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lucas. All in favor, say aye.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockaby.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for the planning commission to adjourn until Monday, December 8th at 4:00 PM for the work session and planning commission meeting? There's a motion by Mr. Foster. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Kidd. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Did I say the wrong date?
No, you did. Just came to me in a vision. Would you all like to? Start a date that had given that not have a comprehensive work session scheduled for that time unless Mr. McCoy has other plans for you.
No current plans.
Okay. All right. Mr. Foster, would you like to revise your most, motion for us to meet at 5:00 PM for the work session?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kidd is.
Second.
Thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. We're adjourned.
We can take action on this tonight?
You may.
Any discussion, any more questions for Mr. McCoy or I assume we can ask questions of the planning commission if anyone has any? Yes, sir.
I don't have a question, but I do have two comments. The first one is I wanted to thank you for doing this in-house. I believe that provided us with a better product as well as a product that is more applicable to the county rather than going outside and getting something generic. So I wanted to compliment you and thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is appreciate you putting up with Sam Foster and I on all our changes that we wanted. You were very much gentleman in handling that and I really appreciate you working with us to give us what we feel we wanted for the Blue Ridge District. I truly thank you and I appreciate it.
Thank you for being engaged.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Clinton, do you have any comments, questions? I know. It's been a long day for him. He's been on that Zoom call for like since 12:30. While you're doing that, Brent, I, I wanted to follow up on what Supervisor Michael said. I think the exercise you all did with us when you had us, we had the joint work session and we looked at the maps in color and we could like really visualize our individual districts. I think that was outstanding. Whether or not we had changes, it, it let you see really easily where your district fell with respect to planning and land use. And I think that was particularly important for me and meaningful for me. But thank you for that. I hope that was a good, a good.
Madam Chair, I, yeah, my apologies. I couldn't, couldn't get unwrapped quickly enough to unmute. So in response to your question, the comment that I would have would be to follow up with and shine a light on Mr. Snyder's comments about history especially. You know, Bonita has a, has a, has a rich history and I would say in modern times, probably let's define that as say since World War II. Bonita has been, has, has done, in my opinion, a minimal job of, of celebrating and, and enlarging its, its unique history. I think in, in the last 10 years, we've improved on that. But I think what's really remarkable is in the past, let's say five years with the, with the advent of Virginia 250 and Bonita's 250th anniversary, we've had a real, real good reason to celebrate and learn more about our history and it's going very well now. And I hope it continues because, you know, it's kind of maddening in some respects. The history that we have here doesn't get the attention that the history of the Piedmont, the Piedmont's history and tidewater. And it's time for us to catch up and celebrate what we have to offer. And we have a real good start with it, with Virginia 250 and like I said, Bonita 250. I hope that our, I would say there's hardly anything that the comprehensive plan can do that would be too much in celebrating our history. So I would encourage us to pay particular attention to that and increase it if, if we can. It's gonna, it helps our heritage and it helps our, our economy as well. So history is a good thing and let's celebrate it. And thank you, Mr. Snyder, for making those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to take action?
So move.
What's the action?
The comprehensive plan is written?
We better spell it out for the minutes. So I think we have a motion by Supervisor Michael to adopt the comprehensive plan.
And Madam Chair, I believe you have a resolution in your packet as well for, for your, for reasonable consideration is a better word.
Instead, I'm still on the lighting page.
I've got it here. I move that the comprehensive plan titled Envision Bonita 2045, as provided by staff, be forwarded to the board. That's not the one you want.
We did that.
Should be another one right after that one.
Draft motions. There's the resolution. It's the last page.
Provided by the staff be approved. Okay. Thank you. I move that the comprehensive plan titled Envision Bonita 2045, as provided by staff, be approved.
We, we have a motion. Supervisor Michael, a second. Supervisor Nicely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? That passes unanimously. Congratulations, everyone.
Hard work.
Hard work, absolutely. So before I ask for a motion to close the Board of Supervisor meeting, I think it's all but appropriate that we recognize Steve Kidd's service on the planning commission.
Thank you.
How many years?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years.
Well, thank you, everybody. It's been fun. It's been a pleasure. It's been challenging at times. I've come to know a lot of people. I was sitting here tonight looking around thinking. I've seen that whole board replaced. Seen this all replaced, this all replaced and all of this replaced. So I, I feel blessed to have worked with, with everybody over the years that I've worked with. I want to thank staff in particular right now. I feel like we've got the strongest staff that we've had in years. Appreciate all the hard work on the comp plan. I know y'all, know y'all did a lot of work on it. Know it got stretched out, but I feel like we've, I feel like we've got a good comprehensive plan going forward. Feel like these guys are, are my once-a-month family. I'm going to miss them dearly. And I wish y'all the best of luck.
I would just say, for a public servant, you are an inspiration. The time and the dedication and the care you've put into this work, I've learned so much from you. I think you've touched every person in Bonita County. And if everyone took their work as seriously and as diligently as you, the world would be a wonderful place. Thank you. Thank you. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.